This meeting is now called for order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMillan.
Present.
And Mayor R. Pence.
Here.
Please stand at attention please. Trustee Brooks.
I am glad to be here. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One second, uh, audiences, check to see if there's anyone signed up for the General Public And, uh, do we have a timekeeper tonight? No? No timekeeper tonight?
No doubt. Time down to the time.
All right. Bridgette Simmons, Franklin, please.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the reason I'm up here, basically, I would like to tell the village and everyone here, uh, the leadership of the village, that the Cremoni Middle School boys, eighth grade boys track team won a state tournament, um, in Peoria a week and a half ago. And I also want to congratulate the high school boys' track team for going to state as well. I'm so proud of our boys. Um, majority of the boys are from University Park, so we're extremely proud of them. We're extremely proud of their accomplishments. And not only their accomplishments on the football field, or the track, or the baseball field, but also academically as well. They're doing awesome things in the community, and they're doing awesome things in the school. And I think that they should be acknowledged for that part, I wanted to say. If you see any of your kids, wish them well, congratulate them, please, because they've been working extremely hard.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simmons.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm here today 'cause I'm upset with the fact that we're having this special meeting. I am standing here, first, I want to thank V.M. Payton for the outstanding job that he has done. He has strategically moved us in the right direction. And my thing is, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Now, I hear that someone else is coming in, who I don't know a great deal about. I hear the person worked in Fort Ice, Robbins, okay? Two very dysfunctional villages. And that, to me, is not a good sign. I think, and I know, V.M. Payton knows our village. He's been doing outstanding work. We have restaurants coming. We have all kinds of businesses lined up, that he and our former mayor worked on, the metro station, the town center being remodeled. I don't want to see us going backwards. And I don't want to see somebody else sitting in that seat. We already had former administration, Brenda Townsend, who was a flop. She didn't know A from Z. I didn't even see on her resume where she even had high school or college listed. And pretty much certain people ran her and ran this village. So I'm not willing to see us go backwards. I want to know, why do we have to even do this? What's the amount of money this person is paying? I want to see their credentials. And I want to know why we even have to go this route? Because we are on the move, and we're not getting ready to go backwards. So if somebody can give me some answers tonight, I would like to know exactly what's going on here.
That's a personnel matter, uh, Ms. Williams. It won't be discussed in the public forum.
That's a sad matter.
Yes, it is.
That's it from the public session. Thank you so much. Now, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're going to go into an executive session for the discussion of personnel litigation. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Bowden.
There's a motion, the second by Trustee Brooks, second by Trustee Bowden. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Personnel litigation.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMillan.
Aye.
This, this meeting, this meeting is called back to order. Trustee Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Brooke.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMillan.
Present.
And Mayor R. Pence. Back into, uh, regular session. Any motions? First, second, and third readings and ordinance of the village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, approving... First, second, and third reading, and ordinance of the village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, approving, authorizing, and making the appointment of village manager of the village of University Park.
Move to table.
Motion by Trustee Jenkins, second by Trustee Bowden and Trustee Williams. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. To table.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMillan.
Aye.
Both aye.
I concur. Now, we'll make a, a motion to adjourn, executive session. I mean, we're making a motion to adjourn our special meeting.
So who?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I want to pray.
All right. Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we're gonna go into our regular meeting. Give us this five minutes, please. You don't have to leave, though.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMillan.
Present.
Here. Here. Please, uh, please, uh, uh, with the body.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve those minutes. The motion will be on the minutes.
I make a motion that you approve the minutes for, how many is it?
It's two.
For, eh, for, uh, twenty-third, and we're doing it.
May fourteenth.
At May fourteenth.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, trust, second by, uh, Trustee McMillan. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMillan.
Both aye.
Both aye. Now, this is a comment form, and it is, it is, if response is necessary, board members may elect to respond formally at the next regular board meeting. Robert Travis, public section.
Good evening, Board. Mayor, Board trustees. The Union Services Special Administration Committee is working on a carnival, uh, for August fifteenth to the eighteenth, to let you know. Uh, I have the contract, had to send it back to make some changes, but I'm gonna get it back soon. And I'd like to have it submitted, be rolled around for the next board meeting in June. Okay? So I'm trying to plan out, uh, you know, uh, what with the status of the Union Services Special Committee. Will it still have to be, or are you gonna change committee?
I'll, I'll respond to you, but I won't respond right now.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Deputy Jay Stroud.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Board, and all present, those viewing. Um, I am a core team member with Northern Illinois Food Bank. And right now, in the county of Will, what we're trying to do is solicit seniors, sixty-plus, sixty and over. Anyone that needs help getting nutritious food, interested in learning about other free services that's avail, available to seniors in your community. I have some flyers, um, I'd like to pass out, if that's okay with you.
Uh, we're just leaving, like, the end of the table, Mrs. Stroud, we'll pass in my place.
Okay. Thank you so much. Just wanted to make sure that everybody in this community is aware, as long as you're a Will County resident. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Board trustees, audience and viewing, viewing audience. My name is Cynthia Hudson, and I've been a resident for our University Park for quite a long time, about thirty years. I would like to say congratulations to all of you that's sitting up here on the board. I apologize, I wasn't able to come through your swearing-in. I would like to just say, I've been saying for years that University Park has the initials U.P. What does that spell? It sells, it spells "up." I would like for our village to go upwards and to move forward. I would also like to say, U.P. also stands for United People. That's what I would like to see on this board. That's what I would like to see in our community, for us to be a united people, for us to work together. We all have differences, but we, it, we need to learn how to work with each other and be respectful of each other. I work hard with the, with the stuff that goes on with the school board. Whenever I find out, I try and bring back to the community. I would also ask everybody to get involved in the school system, because our children truly need us there. We need to attend some of these board meetings. You don't have to attend them all, but show up sometime. Let them see your face. Let them know that we care about our children in this village, and we will fight for our children in this village, just like you all will fight for us in the village. So congratulations to everybody, good luck, and God bless.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hudson. Mildred Morgan. Um, what's, Mrs. Morgan, one second. When did I meet you? I'm sorry, I was a little ahead of myself.
First of all, congratulations to the new board members and to our present sitting board. Want to say congratulations, looking forward to working with each and every one of you, old and new faces. Congratulations to Trustee Bowden, who I had the fortune of sitting on a board with so-and-so. Excited to see you back in that role, so congratulations to you, Shirley. I just wanted to take a moment, too, as Cynthia has said, you know, a lot of us have been out here for thirty years plus. And we continue to fight the same fights, and continue to be aware of the same things. And even though we're sitting around the board, um, meeting here, there's a lot of things that are being, um, our children are being profiled and portrayed as disciplinary problems in the school system. And we know that there are other issues that engage children, including trauma and PTSD. We have a lot of, um, transient, um, families. We have grandparents raising grandchildren, and having raised one set, raising another set can be very difficult. And so I just want us to be aware, um, Cynthia and I both, um, sit on the Strategic Planning Committee for District 201U. And, you know, I'm not really trying to be that active, but still active, because we're still looking for the younger people to step up. And I'm not making bridges, um, by any means, uh, because they've got their hands full. But we do have to be charged, and we have to charge each other in this community, because, you know, when you go into the high school, or any of the schools in this district, in that there is an eighty percent disciplinary problem with black males in the school system, district-wide. And the other group is qualified by twenty percent. Those numbers are skewed, and we don't have appropriate benchmark, and we don't have appropriate people that really care about what's going on in high schools in District 201U. So I'm back in action, and I'm sitting where I need to sit to make sure that our future generation does not lose their potential, and that we hold the district accountable for the quality education that our kids are enjoying in these communities as well. And University Park is a stakeholder along with Cremoni and Park Forest, who has come to be a great ally for University Park. So I would just ask us to not sleep on it and stay engaged. We have some great accolades come out this year, and mostly recently with our track stars, and most of those kids are coming out of University Park. So I just want to admonish the board, you know, to stay engaged, and to, you know, have either myself, you know, others, or Cynthia, to report out at these meetings, so that our people know what's going on in the school district. Thank you very much, and welcome to all of you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Metzen. Mildred Morgan.
Other day, right here. Get that one next time, police records, too. But in any case, we just want you to know that we're aware of this, and that we are acting on the path of the village of University Park in this school system.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Milton Morgan, and I would like to say congratulations to our new mayor and our new trustees. And, uh, I'm looking very forward to, uh, watching our board work together for the betterment of University Park. Uh, there's a couple of things that I'm interested in, um, and I have always been interested in. I'm interested in our youth. I'm actively involved and have always, since about thirty years, uh, interested in our children, giving them lots of structure. Also, I'm interested in, uh, the appearance of our village. It is so important. As I travel around all over to our neighboring communities, I see beautification all over. When I come back here to University Park, and this is not, this is our constructive criticism, uh, when I come back to University Park, it's just not there. We have too many children, and because, uh, um, um, our children don't have much to do now, since for the last, uh, eight years, we can put our children to work. It's okay that they do some things around here. Uh, I've seen where some people put, uh, sites on, uh, Nextdoor, showing all of the litter and garbage and debris. I think it would be a wonderful idea if I, if, uh, the, uh, village would hire some of our sixteen-to-twenty-year-olds, and for instance, uh, right there at the dollar store, put a couple guys there twice a week, have them to put up the paper and debris and stuff, uh, throughout, uh, other areas, over by Twins Lounge and JJ's. Put a couple guys over there, maybe twice a week, and let them clean up, and pay them. You know, it doesn't take much. They can be, uh, well-supervised, uh, to make sure that they're not just goofing off or, um, uh, or, uh, doing other things. But they can go around, our children have to see how we're fighting for them. We have to prepare this next generation that's coming up. Everything, we're fighting so hard for them, and then the gratitude that they should have is, wow, they're fighting for us, let's give back to the community, instead of always looking for what we have always been doing for our children. Um, I think that I have them over at the, uh, golf course, doing a couple of, you know, cleaning up the garbage and debris and stuff. Uh, it's, it's a simple, it's so simple for our children to give back to the community, uh, because it looks terrible. Uh, Mister, uh, our new, uh, director, uh, Mr. Ralph, is a wonderful gentleman, and he works endlessly. I've never seen our, our streets so clean this past winter. And we can help him with the slop he has by putting our children back to work. Our children don't always have to have lots of fun, 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 fun. Let's put them to work, and, uh, we can steal some values in them. Um, and those are two things that I'm really, really interested in, uh, that's the beautification of this village. And I want to thank Mayor Ruiz for allowing, um, us to buy eleven flower pots with a keg or with a, a scheme of dirt, and allowing, uh, uh, flowers to be bought. And at each of the, uh, bus stops, we have beautiful flowers that's gonna be coming up. And the, the, the most expensive part is already done. Uh, also, Mr. Payton, um, tolerated me with that. But the most expensive part has been done already, because we have the pots, we have the dirt there. Public Works doesn't have to pick them up and bring them in, leave them there. I have had a pot for about fifteen years, same kind of pot. You leave that there. And what the kids and I have been doing is planting the flowers there. So next year, we'll just remove the, uh, old debris and, uh, put more flowers there, and, and continue to make our village look nice. Um, I'm friend of mine, myself, we're gonna be getting together to talk with, um, the highway department, 'cause they're not cutting the grass like they should on Weston. But, uh, I'm really anxious and looking forward to watching all of you all work together for the betterment of this our village. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Gina Williams will be our last one.
Good evening again, everyone. For those of you who weren't here earlier, I was speaking, um, based on the fact, on the agenda, it was speaking of removing village manager Payton, who I feel is doing an outstanding job. He's strategically working on things to help keep the village going. Restaurants and other things are coming our way, the metro, the remodeling of the village. So that was my concern earlier. Now, I'm seeing another concern here, uh, regarding replacing the village treasurer. Now, me and Mr. Dealworth have not always seen everything eye to eye, but one thing I can speak on about him, he's at those finance meetings, he's following the money, he's giving us good information on Nextdoor. So I, again, I'm not understanding a rush to judgment to remove people that are in place that are doing a good job. I, I'm just not understanding that. And all due respect to Mr. Ellis, who is over our association, but there are times when I speak to him and Liz Williams, our president, and they can't give me information on the office. We haven't seen any annual reports in years since we had Lincoln Way. So it's kind of upsetting to see you want to put somebody new in place when I can't get something on a small level, but you want to put them on a large level. And again, no respect to Mr. Ellis, but I'm, hey, you can't be safe if you can't be honest. So I'm here to tell you the truth. And I want to know, since we only had two readings on the budget, when is the third reading? 'Cause we're spending money, and we haven't even looked at a budget. I'm not understanding that either. She's talking about flower pots and things, that's beautiful. But have we even looked at a budget to make sure that we're spending wisely? 'Cause we just got through getting up out of the gutter and finally getting our office in place. So we don't want to just start free-willy and doing our thing, and money going out the window, and we don't know which way is up. So again, I'm concerned, because Payton is awesome. Dealworth is doing a great job, and I don't understand the rush to judgment. I don't know when his contract is up, but that should have been looked at. I didn't see anything posted on the website for a new village manager. And again, I want to know more about this person and what they're gonna do for us before we even go any further.
Yeah, yeah, yes, trustee. Sure.
Gina, um, did you get a, uh, budget, did you mail? Did you get one in the mail? Was it mailed to you from I.Y. Properties?
No, ma'am, it wasn't.
It wasn't? No. And Miss Taylor showed me, uh, something that I think she may have went to the office and received, and it was totally incorrect. It was showing lawn services even in the wintertime, grass being cut and stuff. It was all kind of craziness in it, and that's why me and her have diligently worked to find out what is going on. Okay, I'll check into that.
Okay, and, and, Ms. Williams, if the contract is terminated at the term of the outgoing
I was trying to look like that.
Okay. All right. New business, new business, first, second, and third reading?
Uh, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
Um, I would like to make a motion to move, I didn't want the agenda up. Uh, my motion is gonna be to move F two D in front of F two A. If I could get a second on this.
I have, uh, motion to move item F two, uh, trustee, uh, second by trustee McMillan? Roll, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMillan.
Both aye.
Both, both aye.
That's it, we know what you just voted on, because I don't know what that, if you do.
We just moved an item up on the agenda. A resolution of the village of University Park. Yeah. Of, a resolution of the village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, appointing James Ellis to the office of village treasurer. I have a motion to this.
So who?
Second.
There's a motion by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Williams. Roll call.
So being a newly elected trustee, I don't feel as though I have the necessary information, um, and a clear understanding of if the current...
Treasurer.
Treasurer, uh, has been doing a great job or a bad job, um, and would like more information about the candidate that's being proposed to take the seat.
I'm asking for question.
What I'm asking? I'm asking for clarification on to why, uh, there's an appointment of a new treasurer? And just, I, I just, I just need clarification on why we're moving to appoint a new treasurer? Is that, has there been an issue or is there something that, that I should know? So I can make an informed decision as to whether, uh, the new treasurer should be appointed.
As to the performance of the treasurer, I can't address that. Um, however, the treasurer is appointed position. Um, he stays appointed until the new mayor takes office or the term expires. He's a holdover appointee at this time. So he would remain the treasurer until a new treasurer would be appointed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Roll call, Madam clerk?
Trustee Williams.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both side.
And Mayor Rudy.
I concur.
Uh, that's res, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's resolution for 2019 dash thirteen.
Mr. Ellis, you may take your seat. Mr. Ellis, welcome aboard. Okay. First, second, and third reading, and ordinance of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, amending Part Two Title Six of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, when stating the Department of Parks and Recreation. Is there a motion?
So who?
Trust, uh, motion by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Franklin Jenkins. Roll call?
Comment, comment.
Truck, I'm questions, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, Mayor, I wanna, uh, uh, comment on this because, uh, uh, there was a reason why we handle parks and rec the way we did. Um, part of the reason was is that it was the finances. Um, we want the public to know that, uh, and then I had briefly spoke with the mayor before he left town. Uh, we are still in a very tight, tight squeeze. Um, and, and I also talked to him again. And, and we can agree for this to come back. But what we need to understand is that for the next two years, and it's almost like we, we thought it would be three years, starting from 2017 when we first got in office, myself, Liz, and Curtis, when we got our briefing from manager Townsend of the blueprint and the finances of the village. And what I'm saying is that usually towards the end of December, usually the village runs short of 1.5 million. So, this is what I wanna say is that in about, in about 2021, our TIF five will come off the taxes, uh, come off the TIF rolls and the tax money will come in. I just have just a slight concern about bringing this back because that was a $600,000 operation. And I don't want it to, uh, take anything from our kids. But manager Payton did create something that, uh, was beneficial to us. And, and it was the social service. Right now, our director, Parks and Recs, handle it. Uh, but it's the social service title that we're trying to create. And the money that we do at least have, I feel that we can't allocate that towards our kids. But to run an outright department would be virtually impossible. Cause if we look back in the ordinance, and I don't know if the public has it in front of them, but when we look into section two thirty, two, two, three, six, oh, one, the department shall consist of the director of Parks and Recs and shall be appointed by the manager. Uh, that is the same individual right now that we already have in that spot. But he has her doing a different role because we just did not have the money at the time when manager Townsend, uh, let us know that we were running out of cash flow. And actually, section two thirty six oh two, the functions, which is to implement and create recreational programs for the village and coordinate the use of the facilities of the community for light programs. Now, I would say that, uh, Ms. Keely is doing a good job right now with doing that. But we're doing that without, uh, uh, operating Parks and Recs right now. And also, another thing that we have in section two thirty six oh three, the jurisdiction and duties. And that is the maintenance and making sure is to maintain such properties in good condition. Right now, I don't think the public knows is that, and we try to keep it rolling as good as possible. And I take my hat off to manager Payton and the board. When we have the lawn service that cuts for, uh, most of the grass for the facilities and, and, and director Darrell, he has, anything else, he picks up the slack. So some of the funding that has been done for Parks and Rec or to maintain our parks, you know, we have been using now. Uh, I, I feel, Mayor, if we can, we can't talk further about this in a meeting of the whole cause I think I expressed to you before that, uh, really, the new trustees have never got a true financial picture of the major decisions of what we gotta make. And maybe if we can hold this off or until the next meeting of the whole or, or whenever, you know, just so we can have dialogue more about this before we jump into the, the, the spending of bringing the department back.
Well, trustee Brooks, as, as we spoke earlier, I'd like to bring the department back. It's not gonna be funded now, but we can still have those meetings at the committee of, at the legislative and operations committee or that.
Meeting of the whole?
Yeah, yeah. And we can work on working on the quality of programs and affordability of programs. I think it's important to the residents to know that there is a Parks and Recreation Association and that we are diligently working toward making sure that there is gonna be run differently than it was before, but if we got more structure. And then we'll go out to our town hall meetings and we'll get input from our residents and see which programs mean the most and vitally important to our, not just sports programs, our youth and our services. So I would ask your support to just bring the program back. And then, and then we'll work on the structure.
Yeah, so then I'll make the motion to table it to the meeting of the whole. That way, then all the trustees can be informed of the state of the village. And, and new trustees, if you can, please talk to manager Payton because I'm just telling you right now, and Curtis kinda laughed at me. Uh, when, when we came in here and then looked and, 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 and at the time, he was trustee Rudes. It was a very tough, tough, tough decision when they had to make the layoffs. And I don't want trustee, uh, uh, Mayor Rudes to have flashbacks of when he had to make that decision of trustee Rudes. So I make a motion that we table this into the meeting of the whole. And the trustees can at least, the new trustees can become informed and speak with, um, manager Payton of the, the financial state before we move forward. If I could get a second?
Roll call.
Both side.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins Bell. This is to take.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee Bowden.
Both side.
Trustee McMullin.
Both side.
I concur. That meeting of the whole is scheduled the first Tuesday, the second Tuesday in June. First, second, and third reading, and ordinance of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, amending section two, 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 dash zero, six of chapter two, two, two of Title Six, Part Two of the Codified Ordinance of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, authorizing signatories on bank accounts. Is there a motion?
So who?
Moved by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMullin. Roll call.
Question?
Questions?
Mayor, uh, section two, 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 uh, dash zero, six, um, um, aim. We have, uh, the authorization. And, and I know we had it in lore because we were trying to watch the management of the money. But it, uh, I just asked you that if the board is gonna agree on this, that the designated trustee, uh, be pointed by the mayor. It reads pointed by the mayor and concurred with the board so that y'all be in agreement.
I'd like to make, um, make a motion to name that person. And I'll name you trustee Brooks.
Designate trustee?
Yes.
Both side? Oh. So who, okay, I feel better. That's a second.
Trustee Lewis Williams made the motion. Trustee Coles makes the second. Roll call, Madam clerk, to accept trustee Deapples Brooks as the designated trustee as the signatory on the county. Yes.
Okay, uh, trustee. Theo is going to be one of the signatures on the council. Who the other, who are the others gonna be? And how many are we having now on Theo's account? And is this explicitly what you're talking about?
Yeah, I, I seen on there and, um...
It's, it's the mayor, the designated trustee, the treasurer, manager, and clerk.
And if we can amend that to make sure that it reads that it's designated by the mayor and concorded by the board. So it wouldn't seem biased that the mayor just selected trustee Brooks. But trustee Brooks is just available. That's why trustee Brooks' name is being said. That's, that's the truth.
And I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, right.
So the public would know who else was going to be on the council.
Right.
Cause I see it here.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of it. I just wanted the public to be aware who else was on the signature.
Right. So Madam clerk, we, we did get that so that it would be in concurrence with the board? All agreements, okay?
Exactly.
Right.
Roll call.
This is to, the designated trustee, trustee Williams.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both side.
I concur. Item F two C. Need a roll call? Now we need a roll call on the main motion. Roll call.
Trustee Williams. This is to approve the ordinance.
We did the designated signing, now we approve the ordinance.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both side.
I concur.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen.
Thank you, Madam clerk. Item F two C, a resolution of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, authorizing and approving the execution of business signature cards and related bank documents with Midland Stakes Bank and U.S. Bank Corp. Is there a motion?
So who?
Second.
Moved by trustee Brooks, uh, second by trustee Williams. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both side.
Mayor Rudy.
I concur.
Mr. Mayor, that's resolution twenty ten dash fourteen.
Item F two E, bills payable. Attached for your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the Village of University Park that occurred on April twenty-third, twenty nineteen through May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. General fund, three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two and sixteen. Road and Bridge, three hundred and ninety. Town Center Fund, eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, ninety-six. Capital Project Fund, five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven, ninety-six. And the payroll fund, four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine and seventy-seven. total three hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine, eighty-five. Is there a motion?
So who?
Questions?
Question, Mayor? Um, got a couple. Uh, manager Payton, just wanna check, um, uh, check one oh three, six, eight, one. Would that just, oh, that's, that's fire department vehicle. Okay, I caught that. I just caught that, I'm sorry. But one oh three, six, thirty-five, would that be for our police vehicles? Okay, um. One oh three, six, nine, seven, um, that was quite big for tires. Would that be for police vehicles too?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, one oh three, seven, oh, seven, soon as they get, get this, would they start cutting the grass again?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Um, oh, I see the chairwoman for the Police and Fire Commission here. So that's, that's, that was that one oh three, seven, five, three for the blue line. The review, is that, that was it? Okay, alright. I'll pay the bills.
Uh, I, I do have a question for the manager. The, the whole bill process with Robinson Engineering, manager Payton?
Yes. Do you want just an overview of the entire?
Yes.
Process?
Yes.
So those are bills based on projects that Robinson Engineers have, have been working on from last year, uh, to a specific cutoff date. Uh, as you know, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the village comes to a funding shortage around December timeframe. So those bills were held off for payment until we started receiving payment coming in. A lot, a lot of those bills are reimbursable bills, uh, from I-DOT. Once we make the payment, the invoice is sent into I-DOT. And they submit a percentage of those, uh, fundings back for some of those projects.
Do you know which ones are, uh, reimbursed from I-DOT?
I don't have the entire packet in front of me, but I have no problem producing that to you, uh, tomorrow, Mr. Mayor, at all. But that would, but actually, that will clear the balance that we currently...
That would zero my...
That, that would zero the amount.
Okay. Trustee McMullin?
On check, um, one, zero, three, six, three, seven. Backfines Incorporated, office scan. Mr. Payton, can you tell me what that's all about?
Uh, that was a fee, um, to, uh, ensure that, um, as the mayor was transitioning to his office, that there was no, um, hidden cameras, bugs, listening devices or any other devices in his office, uh, for, based on his request. Uh, so they came in and actually did service where they reviewed the office, checked the office for various devices. His phones, computers, the truck that he's assigned, ensured that, uh, there were no devices, uh, to do surveillance or listening were intact or available within those, uh, items that are specifically stated.
Uh, can I have your report on that? Uh, this is our president, uh, having the office, uh, stand for bugs. The car stand for bugs. Listening device, phone, computer. Can I have, uh, a copy of the report, please?
The company has, uh, tendered the report to Mayor Rudes and he stated that he will share the report with the board. Yeah. So he did, the, the mayor did say he would, uh, produce the report so the board, the report can be distributed to the board.
Did you, did it say find anything?
I have not reviewed the port, the reports, so I can't answer to that affirmatively or negatively.
I'll get you, I'll get you a board. I'll get all, all the board members to a board. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, Madam clerk.
Trustee Steve Williams.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Both side of Payton.
I concur. Okay. The bills payable, under the mayor's report, we're gonna do a proclamation. First of all, before I go to do, do on the proclamation, I'd just like to tell Commander Wilson, thank you for having your officers and their reward tactics and helping the person save their life and throwing what on. Thank you, thank officer Winn and the designated?
Uh, yes.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the proclamation. This proclamation is declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Village of University Park to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, one hundred Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average there are thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January twenty thirteen, Hidayah Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her twenty-second birthday. And whereas to help Hidayah and the hundred Americans whose lives are cut short and countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June seventh, twenty nineteen, the first Friday in June, as the fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hidayah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to own mothers when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June seventh, the first Friday in June twenty nineteen, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June seventh, twenty nineteen, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Joseph Ruedes the Third of the Village of University Park declares the first Friday in June, June seventh, twenty nineteen, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. We have a roll call. I need a motion, I'm sorry. For the proclamation to accept the proclamation.
Motion. Motion.
Motion by trustee? By trustee Jenkins-Bell, second.
Second.
By trustee Williams. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides.
I concur. Thank you very much, board. Thank you very much.
In honor of, I'm a survivor of gun violence. I lost my oldest son to gun violence in Madison, Illinois. And almost three years to the date, we also lost a native daughter on University Park to gun violence, which would have been kind of a whole, who was my son's best friend's sister. I'm sorry. So I just want to, you know, last year, Mayor Devin Covington allowed me to present this to the board, and I want to thank the board for again recognizing those that we have lost out of this village and that we continue to have the fight against gun violence and making a safe place for all of our children in our communities. They should be allowed to go to the places that they should be able to frequent. And by the fact that we present this every year, it says that we stand with Hadidah, who went from the White House to a playground, who later had lost her life. My son, I sent one son over to his third conflict in war, and only a week later to lose my other son in a free country. So the fight that we have on these streets is real, and we still stand. So as long as we're standing, our children's voices are not silent. They're still speaking. So thank you, board, for your consistent support of gun violence initiatives. And if I may get the picture, with the red orange shirt and Mom's Demand Action thousand burden chapter, I'm their faith leader in their Survivor Leadership League at the state level in every county and library out of Washington. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, board, and thank you, my community.
Before the Board of Trustees, village clerk, manager, appointed officials, committees, and commissions. Trustee Bowden.
Actually, I'm not on this committee, but I, on behalf of the Village of University Park, I attended the scholarship graduation over at Crete Monique. And Donna Dedborn, who says she has been over this organization for over thirty years, so I give props to her for continuing to do this. And there were four students that received, I believe it was one thousand dollars each. Jaleen Anderson, she's going to be a music engineer at Columbia College, and Budwick Truck Lines, and I believe these are over in industrial choir to contribute to her. Ladeka Vance, Crete Monique, she's going to be a neonatal nurse at Tennessee Tech University, and that's with Bimber Manufacturing. And Makaya Virture going to be a nurse at McMurray, and she was sponsored by Wellstar. And Destiny Branigan, also a nurse, going to Wesley University, and her contributors were Daniel Bernard Memorial Scholarship Program. And then there were six others that I believe she said is continuing every year. They're given money from the Village of University Park and combined donations with Crete Monique. Also, I went to the transportation meeting of Mayor Rudy, Rudy, oh, I start off, Mayor Trustee, Mayor Ruedes, and I went along with John Payne, Mayor Payne. Oh, Lord, village manager Payne. And, excuse me, I'm all confused tonight. And I just want to say that he represented University Park quite well when we're trying to get the funding, the extra funding from the transportation department. And they were concerned that no one from University Park had participated or had used the money that had been set aside for us. And if we don't use it, they're going to return it. So we need additional funding, and I mean, this gentleman, he actually begged on behalf of University Park, and I would like to just thank him for his due diligence on that particular project.
I'll be short. Get used to it, Mayor. Two minutes. Okay. I'm looking in the crowd. Okay, y'all got me. All right, this is very, very, very fast. On behalf of the mayor, I went to the South Suburban Airport. There was a meeting on Thursday, on behalf of the mayor, and apparently there was some resistance there. There's a lot of people in Piaton and south of us who really don't care about University Park getting the airport, or the airport coming to our back door. But one thing that I will say is that ninety percent of that is already funded. It was clearly, clearly stated that this would be the newest airport from the FAA that for recent, recent years, I think the last one was done in Denver, and that was almost a decade back. So it was a very productive, and actually, if you were here last month when the representative of Robin Kelly's office was here, it was, it was the same gentleman, Rick, I believe, he was the same one that did the presentation, except it was a little different, out of comfort zone of people saying that they didn't care about the airport, that our facts were different. Also, I did have a chance, someone, old friend, they're going to help us and see if Liz, Williams, and myself, if we can do something about the water here in the town. It's going to take time, but we're trying to do our best. So we're not going to jump ahead of ourselves. We're going to see what we can do and work with the mayor. The mayor initiated the phone call to make sure that the residents of University Park can get something going with the water system. If we can't get by the water out, we're trying to figure out what can we do, at least with the sewer line, because if you notice, we either pan all sewer, we're panning the sewer and the water, but according to Aqua Water, everything that comes in should be going out, so you pan for water coming in and out, and that's impossible. Some of you are gardeners, it's impossible to sit there, you watering your lawn, and they're telling you that, or, excuse me, watering a pot on your porch, and they tell you that you should be paying for that gallon going into the sewer. Well, that's what the lady told me, so. All right, timeout. Thank you, God bless. You know Ms. Brooks?
I would like to take the time to celebrate our youth. My wife mentioned that we just had two state championship teams from the junior high school and also from the high school, and those, there was a total of five kids from either the junior high or the high school were actually residents of University Park. So if we could just take the time to give those guys a round of applause. So what that means is, though we don't currently have a Parks and Recs Department, we've still been producing national caliber athletes, so imagine what we can have if we were able to successfully re-implement our Parks and Recs that wouldn't be such a burden to our budget, but would be a success to our athletes, young athletes in the village. I went to a balloon release for a young man on Friday who was a resident of University Park. He wasn't killed in the village, but he was one of ours. And as I stood out there as a trustee, and probably the oldest person out there with a bunch of teenagers, and I know so many of them, as I shook hands, all I could think about is what could I do to make sure none of these guys are next? So I appreciate us acknowledging that gun violence is a serious epidemic in Chicago, the Chicagoland area, and it's something that I would like to be a huge advocate and supportive of because I don't want to lose another University Park youth. I'm excited to announce that on June first, I'm going to be taking leadership on a restoration of Craig Park. What this looks like is that in an effort to ensure that once the students are released from school for the summer, that they at least have parks that they can take pride in, parks that are safe and parks that are welcome. It's the first step in the right direction. The way that I organize is that I'm going to be responsible for providing the manpower. I've been in the process of recruiting volunteers to come out and help me with this project, and the plan is to repaint the basketball courts, make sure that the courts have weeds and different things growing out of them, to make sure that we put up basketball nets, put down moach in the parks, and just make the park presentable and a fun, safe place for our youth at a minimum cost to the village, and no manpower required from the Department of Public Works because I'll take leadership on providing all the volunteers. So I would like to invite everyone out who's able to come out and help be a part of this project. There'll also be two basketball games going on that day. There'll also be an opportunity to sign children up for football and cheer, and we'll also be barbecuing for the kids. So it's just a great opportunity for the community to come together and not have excuses of why we can't put things together. With that, I would like to say in my first meeting, black men in the village, I'm calling you out. I really need, we really need your support. We really need more men in the village to step up and volunteer and be a part of the solution to so many things that are going on. I'm going to propose a days-on-duty project where I'm going to need at least fifty men in the community to help us to police the parks at night when the police are strapped. So what can we do as a community that doesn't cost anything to help the police department to ensure that our children are safe? A great idea is for the black men in the community to step up and be a part of the solution. So I'm challenging you to challenge me. Reach out to me, get with me. We need at least fifty men in the community to step up to be a part of the solution this summer, and that's my report. Thank you. So if you need to contact me, you can reach out to the village hall, and they'll make sure that the information gets over to me. I also have a website that you can sign up, rkidscount.biz. rkidscount.biz, and you can register there, and I'll be in touch with you, and then we'll make it happen. Thank you.
This is to everybody within the realm of my voice. I would like, this is a new chapter for University Park. For the last two years, me and my partner represented University Park with leadership of the board. Now we have a new board. I am very excited to work with the new board, and the strides that we have made with Manager Page has been phenomenal. I can tell you what, this village has moved forward. We walked into a deep, deep, deep hole, but now, through two years, we are finally crawling out of it. And all of the faces that I see right now, the beautiful faces that I see right now, we should maintain that because there were times when one person sat in that seat, but I challenge you and everybody within the realm of my voice to come to the village meetings because it's much more of a community, a community that cares, a community that is striving, a community that is progressive. So I challenge the community, come out and fill those seats like they filling them tonight, and just not tonight, every board meeting. So I wish everyone the best of health and the best of spirits, and that is my report for this week. Thank you.
Okay. Department heads? Madam Clerk, trustee? Department heads?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to make an announcement about the law enforcement Special Olympics torch run that's going to be coming up on June fifth, if anybody wants to participate. Our leg actually starts from Western and University Parkway. We'll be setting up around ten AM, and then we're supposed to run all the way down to Speedway on Governors. Usually DEA will pick us up right here at Stager Monique Road. If, I'm not sure if they're going to be participating or not this year, but if you don't make the run or come out to support the runners, then we will then later convene over at Federal Signal. We usually have a large picnic over there, and we'll be there about between twelve, twelve thirty, as soon as the runners finish the run through. as soon as the runners finish the run through Monique. So you're all welcome to come out for that.
Support with all they can.
Yes, if you'd like to run, then you can come, come out. Like I say, we will meet over at Western and University Parkway is where our leg picks up on June 5th. Anyone who wants to purchase a 2019 t-shirt, they are on sale over at the Police Department for twenty dollars. The hats are fifteen dollars. All the proceeds go to the Special Olympics.
June 5th is Wednesday, right?
What time?
Yeah.
Yes. 10:00 a.m. if you want to participate in the run. Okay, they, Crete will pass the torch to us there at Western and University Parkway. And then if not, you can meet us over at Federal Signal there for the picnic. And we'll probably be there between 12:00 and 12:30. Okay?
And anybody that went all day to the Special Olympics, just feel free to go there because they need the help. They deserve the help.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, residents. I don't have a report tonight, but what I would like to do and say is, I would like to welcome the new trustees, along with our mayor. Also, our treasurer, Mr. Ellis, I, I used to call him the bread man because you, you always saw him riding around throughout the village. And he was always a giver man, you know? And hopefully now I, I can, I can get me some more sweet rolls and bread. On yesterday, we had a great time celebrating our military. I would like to thank Ms. Children's, along with Mayor Rudes, our village manager Payne, and the trustees. They could have been doing anything else. And, and the village clerk, I'm sorry. They could have been doing anything else. They could have been barbecuing a, you know, enjoying their, their time on their own. But they took out their time to celebrate our men and women of the armed forces. Thank you.
Anybody else?
And one more. Good evening, Mayor Rudes, trustees, viewing audience and fellow department heads. Just two quick announcements from the Fire Department. The Fire Department's fundraising drive will be coming up this year as well. We're organizing right now to do a fill-the-boot campaign for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, the MDA. Dates and times will be forthcoming on that as soon as I know more from my personnel that are organizing that event. And as the weather turns nicer outside and we come in through holidays like Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, I will be working with our, our cable slash website staff person to make sure our updated information's on there about fireworks safety and things of that nature.
Heating and cooling centers?
That is, well, that is something that work continues to develop on. We have initial plans right now for, for heat waves. It's all stuff that needs to be addressed and discussed further with the manager once we can find time in the schedule to get that part of it done. But yes, we do have plans.
Thank you, Chief.
I would like to give my report. First, thank, thank you for my department heads, the hard work and dedication that you guys provide the village on a daily basis. Ms. Kitchen, the support she provides me on a daily basis and managing my schedule and doing a very, very hard and difficult job of keeping everything organized on my behalf as well as everyone else. I would like to, again, welcome the new elected officials, new trustees to the board. And I would like to welcome the mayor to the board. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you and trying to achieve your goals. I'm a very open and transparent individual as far as my communication goes. When I do this, number one key is to keep the board together and keep us in sync. So everybody has the same information at the same time. Trustees that have an interest in a certain area, I implore you, I beg you to come to me and let me know what projects you guys want to work on so we kind of look at priorities and kind of push out your agenda as you guys elected, you know? As you guys promoted yourselves during the election. There's a lot to speak on, youth programs and doing things for the youth and Parks and Recreation and various different things like that. And I think the village is very, very much interested in reinstituting programs. The key is making sure we have proper programming and proper planning as far as budgetary planning and ensuring the programs are successful. My biggest challenge as village manager over the past two years is not getting programs set up, but is getting participation from residents, the youth in the area and using these programs. We set up a lot of programs with the Parks and Recs Department that stood up. And we've had to cancel a lot of programs due to lack of attendance. So I would like to hear from you all, what you all want to see in the village going forward in the next four years and how we all can come together and meet these agendas and kind of accomplish these goals. If it makes fiscal sense, then it makes sense to do. I'm not one to sit here and say that it's not a difficult job to prioritize spending for the village. It is a quite difficult job, especially when you owe people and when you want to do things positive for the village going forward. Sometimes I have to make the hard decisions of not funding programs or not funding certain things. So in saying that, welcome. I would tell you, some of our new trustees have been working very hard already. So Trustee Jenkins Bell contacts me on a almost daily basis in regards to a myriad of subjects and questions that she has in regards to learning the village, more specifically our Parks and Recreation, and her investment in trying to reopen the farm, her and the mayor. So we are looking at options, we are looking at funding solutions. And I just want the residents to know it is an active process. So we're not just sitting here ignoring the concerns of the residents in the Rico Farm area or residents, village-wide. It does take planning and it does take prioritization. But we're going to do things in baby steps. Talking to Trustee Jenkins Bell, the biggest thing is systematically reopening facilities, not doing everything all at once, focusing on the outdoor, outdoor area of the farm, then moving to the house, maybe moving to the barn, doing a community garden, but a step-by-step process so we can systematically spend funds and make sure that it's going to be a success. The worst thing I can do as a manager is expend funds on something and then say, I can't fund it. A good example is the pool, right? I, there's fundings to get the pool back open, right? We can dump the funds into the pool, get the pool back up to speed, get the facilities fixed. But then we run into the question is, who will run the pool? How are we going to staff employees? How are we going to staff vending? So before we do these things, we want to make sure planning is in place to ensure that we're not just putting money to fix something, but we're going to actually have a solution for the residents. And this is why you all have not seen the pool open this season. But we are working on making sure the pool will be open next season and we are in proper planning. The mayor has provided an action list of various locations and properties within the village that he wants our architect to assess, to do an estimated cost of funding to bring these facilities back in operation. And we're in the process of doing that. And I believe with the mayor's blessings, that will be discussed at the next committee of the whole meeting. And then from there, the board can prioritize with myself how we kind of implement this plan on a systematic basis. So we are working on getting things done. It's just the squeaky wheel, these little oil, and it looks slow, but it is a process. Especially when you have facilities closed for multiple or several years. Things are not easy. Coach Tutu, I always say, Coach Tutu. Trustee Franklin, you know, has always been a true advocate for our youth, even prior to being a trustee. He reached out to me and said, hey, listen, I know you don't have the staffing, but can you provide supplies for June 1st for Craig Park? And what can I say? I can't say no. Why wouldn't we provide supplies or resources to something that is of great value for the village? And so I asked everyone here, including the audience, to please bring your suggestions to me. And know when a suggestion is brought to me and it's not done in immediate fashion, not because we don't want to implement it, it's because we systematically have to do things. So in saying that, we're looking good going into the summer months. I feel confident in our police department, our public safety entities, and preparing for the summer months coming about. As everybody knows, we're hiring for police officers. I believe that poston's about to close on the 31st. So from there, the fire committee's commission and moving forward and seeing what we get as far as candidates for the police department and when we'll be searching the police department with proper candidates. Myself and the mayor sat today and we spoke about funding. And we spoke about funding for public safety as far as vehicles, you know? And actually making sure that our public safety groups have the proper supplies to do their job to certain residents. And that is the human priority of his as well as others. So understand, we're in week two of a new board, new mayor, three trustees, three trustees that have been here for two years. So priorities change and things get shifted around. So that's what we're working on right now. So I thank everybody as we provide that quick update. The village is moving forward. May not be in the speed everybody wants, but we are doing it in a productive and an organizing and efficient manner. Thank you.
I wanted to thank all the residents for coming out tonight. It's a pleasure to see those that I do know and some that I don't. This, this first week of being elected has been a challenge. I've learned a lot. And with the assistance of our clerk and our village manager and our trustees, they've taught me several things with the blessings of the mayor and also the village manager. They allowed, they allowed me to set up a program for what I, I couldn't use the branding of Real Men Cook because it's taken in Chicago. So we're going to use the brandy of Daddy's Cook, too. It will be the day before, before Father's Day to honor the men in our community that we, we don't see and we do see. There, some of them are not as active as, as we may like them to be. But we still have to honor them because they're active in our homes and maybe not in different programs in our communities. So I feel that because Tutu is so active in our community, we should, we, I'm sorry for Tutu, I mean, Trustee Franklin, we should honor him and all of the fifty men that he challenged to come out and help him with his restoration project. I'd like also to thank Mrs. Mildred Morgan for taking her time, free time, for planning eleven flower pots, eleven quick flower pots out to run through the town community to show that we are moving forward. And we're moving forward slowly, but we're moving forward, which is a good thing. I want the board to know that I'm going to work consistently with them to make the decisions that are necessary to move this community forward and get things done as fast as we can, we can afford to get them done. Sometimes we may not agree on things, but what we will always do is stick together to get us going forward. And I just wanted to thank you tonight.
Just briefly, because I want to get home before the storm comes. I really want to thank all of you for coming out and showing an interest in what we do as a board. Keep coming back. Hold us accountable for what you elected us to do. I want to thank this board for allowing me the opportunity to attend the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Annual Conference in Birmingham, Alabama. It was fantastic. As always, we get the best education as municipal clerks, as you will find anywhere. Not only did I attend the conference, I got there and ended up having to proctor one session and I convened another session because clerks, we step up when there's a void to do what we can do. And there's so, everything is so fast, moving so fast. But I did attend a session, meeting citizens with legal requirements in this digital age. Municipal problem solving. That shows that we are stronger when we share, when we share our shine, when we share our knowledge. And that's why I work so hard and I'm so grateful for these boards that I have had an opportunity to work with over the years to share this that I learned. But I did proctor, of course, using power and influence ethically and effectively in the workplace. Doesn't mean you bring a whip. It means you learn to involve all of your people because we're all in here for the same thing. So we have to listen to our, to our residents and we have to communicate with each other. I call it the three Cs of municipal government, effective municipal government. And it is, we have to communicate, collaborate, and compromise. Thanks once again, Mr..
Thank you very much, Madam Brooke, department heads and trustees for your comments. We are closer to adjourned. All in favor? Thank you very much. Opposed? No? Same sign? Thank everyone for coming out tonight.